All right, welcome everyone. I'd like to call to order the Fridley Public School Board meeting for January 15th. We'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance. Please rise.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the public which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well, thank you. One item that we'll start with this evening would be the swearing in of our newest board member. We're happy to announce and seat tonight Abdysalam Adam, joining us on the school board.
Since I'm not standing near microphone, I'll speak up for Darryl in the back. Mr. Adam, it is an honor that you were appointed to guide the education of our community's students. As you recite the oath of office, you assume a tremendous responsibility as director of our school district with the duties empowered by the Minnesota Legislature. This power puts you and the other members of our school board in the position of being both morally and legally responsible for equitable, quality education of every student in the district. In carrying out this responsibility, you will be asked to fulfill the roles of vision, structure, accountability, and advocacy. In providing vision, the board with participation of the community, envisions the community's educational future, and then formulates the goals, defines the outcomes, and sets the course for public schools. To achieve the vision, the board establishes a structure and creates an environment designed to ensure all students the opportunity to attain their maximum potential through a sound organizational framework. Because as a board, we must be accountable to the community, we must ensure a continuous assessment of student achievement and all conditions affecting the education of our children. As board members, we serve as education's key advocate on behalf of students and our community schools to advance the vision of our schools. Furthermore, we must strive to work together with the superintendent and staff to lead the district toward fulfilling our mission, which is to inspire and prepare all students with confidence, courage, and competence to achieve their dreams, contribute to community, and engage in the lifetime of learning. Now please, Mr. Adam, would you raise your right hand and state the oath of office?
Having signed the acceptance of office and oath of office, I hereby publicly affirm my commitment to the oath of office. I swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States of America and this state of Minnesota, and that I will discharge faithfully the duties of the office of school board member of independent school district number 14 to the best of my judgment and ability.
Thank you.
Now with that, I would entertain a motion to approve the agenda for the meeting.
Motion to approve?
We have a motion by Prueeta, seconded by Thornton, to approve the agenda. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And the motion passes. Our next item is the spotlight on recognition, beginning with the Employee of the Month, Dr. Hile.
Thank you. Good evening, Chair Riddle and the school board meeting members. It is with pleasure this evening that I announce our employee of the month for the month of January. So congratulations to Lisa Shagel, our employee of the month for January. Lisa started with Fridley Public Schools as a substitute in the health offices in 2011. In 2013, she was hired as a paraprofessional at Stevenson Elementary. She is noted by her coworkers as thoughtful, hardworking, and very compassionate towards every student in the classroom. Not only is she there to ensure the success of every student, but she cares deeply about people she works with, she listens and remembers details about their lives. Lisa is dependable, caring, and a joy to work with. She is willing to do whatever needs to be done to ensure the success of our school. She rarely misses a day of work and can often be found covering for her fellow staff. Not only does she have a great, do a great job during a school day, but she often volunteers at Stevenson events. Lisa is a great employee and an all-around terrific person. Congratulations Lisa, we are lucky to have you. And that was written by Darryl Vosler, Principal at Stevenson. So congratulations to Lisa.
Next would be a recognition of Ms. Delvo from MSBA.
All right, we also have a, did you know that was coming?
No.
Okay. We also have a special recognition this evening for our school board member Mary Kay Delvo from the Minnesota School Board Association for MASA. So Mary Kay has been recognized for her Minnesota School Board Association with a Leadership Development Certificate. So Mary Kay completed the MASA School Board Workshop Series, so which was accomplished by her successfully completing, learning to lead the School Board Basics Phase 1, Leadership Foundation, School Finance and Management Phase 2, and building a high-performance School Board Team Phase 3. So Mary Kay, MSBA appreciates the effort and dedication that you and all of our school board members put forth for the sake of our public school children. So congratulations to Mary Kay.
Thank you, Dr. Hile. Next up, we have superintendent and staff reports, beginning with a presentation by Principal Vosler and a large cohort of his.
Come on up, guys, come on. Don't leave me up here alone. So we didn't expect to have a little bit more. Is it on?
Yeah, it is. It will just not come through the PA system. It is, it is actually doing it.
Why don't you guys maybe come over here so you can see your slide show? All right. All right, so I brought, we thought we'd tell you a little bit about what goes on around Stevenson, so I thought what better people to bring than our experts, people who live here. So I brought six students. I brought Karima, this is Josie, this is Carla, Mickey, Claire, and Marta. And then representing a couple coaches, this is Ms. Matheson, she's our IB coordinator, and Mrs. Telefis is our reading coach. All, so, let's just, we're going to tell you about the typical day that Stevenson kids go through at school. So, where's Karima?
Right behind you.
Karima, come on over here to my area.
My name is Karima.
Hang on, hang on, we're going to change. So guys, we're going to talk to these guys, so we'll come up here and we'll face these. All right, your slide show's there if you need it.
In the morning, when we get to school, we grab our breakfast and we get to class. My favorite breakfast is the cookie. During morning check-in, we grab our folder and Mr. Stefan checks our homolog. Then we get Stefan dollars. We then have time to do morning work. Next, we get into a circle for our morning meeting. Every Wednesday, we get to do a Wonder Wall. I like the Wonder Wall because we get to learn about other people's wonders. Now Josie's going to talk to you about math.
Tell them what the Wonder Wall is. What do you do with it?
Our Wonder Wall, we have this Wonder Wall on our class, in our class, we have, it has these, we people, classmates write wonders on a sheet of paper and we hang it on the Wonder Wall, and on every Wednesday, we get to answer other people's wonders. Now Josie's going to talk to you about math.
When we start our math, it's with Ms. Matheson. We'll start off by having a number talk. I like number talks because I get to see other people's thinking and they get to see mine. Oh, and we'll also have a focus lesson after talking about things that we're mainly studying. After that, Ms. Matheson will assign, me and my class, us into groups. He do, who groups with Ms. Matheson, math with someone with a partner, math by myself, and math with technology on freckle. Well, now Ms. Matheson is going to talk a little bit more about math. My favorite Daily Five is math with someone because I get to do a fun math game with the partner. And now Ms. Matheson is going to talk a little bit more about math.
So in our math instruction, just new this year, we have trained our elementary teachers in on a balanced math structure. It's really a framework so we can have rich math whole group discussions, but also that small group time for teachers to work with kids. It includes the rotations that Josie shared, where students get time to independently practice, have that collaborative problem solving, and writing in math. We did this so that we could strengthen engagement in math, have a better understanding of our individual students, give them more feedback, and provide better differentiation to meet the needs of each and every child. In addition, in math, we have a full-time person that is half-time interventionist, half-time coach. She serves 30 students, third and fourth graders, 30 minutes daily, and then the coaching part of the time is really spent on data, professional learning groups, staff development, and helping core instruction. In addition, all of our kids here are bedtime math students, right guys?
It might tell you some of those.
Yeah. And this is a program that we have in second grade, it's a signature program. It's really a family engagement program where students are reading short little quirky stories that involve some science, some literacy, some math, and it has leveled problems so everyone can be successful. So we love this. And then another cool thing that we're doing this year, it's called Perennial Math. It's math challenge teams. They participate online in competitions, and that is for our third and fourth graders. All right. With that, we're going to move on to lunch and recess.
Well, I guess that's me. Sure.
That was your do, Mr. Vosler?
He spends all day at lunch, I think.
Actually, I don't. What I want to talk about is what the kids do. So for our lunch program, we try and involve kids with the running of the school in as many different purposes as we can. And our lunch program is one example. So for instance, 79% of the garbage that we produce at lunch is recycled. It doesn't go into our garbage. 12% of it goes into recyclables, 67% of it goes into organics bin, and then it actually saves our school district a lot of money because we pay for garbage by the pound. So it's, not only is it, is it good to teach kids about how we can save on the garbage, but we're also saving some money at the same time. And the kids help run that program. Another thing our kids do is when everybody's done eating, our kids, as you can see, they wash, they're in charge of washing their own tables and cleaning up after themselves, and they're also in charge of sweeping the floor and getting it ready for the next lunch period. All right, Carla, you're next. Oh, Ms. Telefis, come on up and talk about reading.
Yep. So similar to what Ms. Matheson talked about with math, we use a balanced literacy approach as also for literacy. That framework, we talked about using whole group and small group instruction as well. We use something called the Benchmark Literacy Curriculum through grades K through 4 that work with reading, writing, phonics, and word study. And then a lot of the teachers use a Daily Five model to help kids engage in independent activities. I'm going to let Carla talk a little bit more about what that looks like for a student side in a second. The other part I want to want to talk about is the literacy support that we give at Stevenson. Right now, we are a team of six teachers, three full-time, three half-time. That includes also my point five as the literacy coach, working on things with, working on core instruction, staff development, data analysis. And then we also have a paraprofessional that helps with our data collection also to keep track on where we are in moving kids forward with their reading goals. This fall session, we team taught our reading team and the teachers' class-wide press reading interventions in all grade levels. Daily, we serviced this fall session over 150 kids in reading interventions from grades K through 4, and we use a level literacy instruction and a press reading intervention resources to do that. So some of those pictures kind of show that small group instruction. What all kids get on a daily basis, Carla's going to talk to us a little bit about in her third grade classroom.
Our reading block includes whole group, mini lessons, and small groups reading with Missy. Our independent time is spent on Daily Five activities. These pictures show some examples of Daily Five, of our Daily Five activities. Sydney's doing work on writing. Alsona is doing word work. Gavin and Edgar are doing read to someone. Kalil is doing listen to reading, and Emmanuel's doing read to self. My favorite Daily Five choice is read to someone because I get to read with my friends. Now Mickey's going to talk about what we do during our unit of inquiry.
During our unit of inquiry, we learn about the world around us. We get to investigate and explore. Right now, we are learning about money trade systems and what people value. Now Claire will talk about specials.
Our specials are FIDE, music, Spanish, media, and art. We go to one or two specials every day. My favorite special is art because we get to craft, and I like crafting. Now Marta is going to talk about after-school activities.
All six of us participate in different after-school activities, one to three days a week. I participate in Lego League.
I participate in games and have tried to play.
The Lego League team is new this year. We are given challenges and get to build and code our robot. In February, we get to compete against other teams. I enjoy Lego League because I get to, I like building with Legos and coding robots.
Sounds like an awesome day.
Thank you.
All right, with that, we'll move on to the business action items. Our first action item is a resolution accepting gifts. Tonight, the board would like to make a special note of gratitude. This is our first permanent board meeting at our new facility here in the Fridley Community Center. And if the desks and the chairs that we're sitting on here look a bit familiar from our past, it's because they are. The furniture was previously used at the City Hall as part of the City Council in their old City Hall building. The city of Fridley generously donated the furniture and several other of the items to the Fridley Public Schools, to the district shortly before they moved to their new facility. The partnership between the Fridley Public Schools and the city of Fridley has always been a very special one, and tonight we want to especially acknowledge their support and generosity and contribute their benefits on to us for years to come. With that, we do have a resolution. Every month, we're also fortunate to receive other gifts from the community as a whole. And this month, be it resolved that the Fridley Public Schools accepts with appreciation the following gifts by the school district. The following persons donated to Stevenson Elementary School for a total of $300. Jackie Bell to pay off outstanding meal balances. The following persons donated to Fridley Public Schools, the Sidely Fridley, the furniture, and several items for our new school board meeting home here at the Fridley Community Center. Do I have a motion to accept the gifts and thank the donors for their contributions?
I move to accept the gifts and thank the donors for contributions.
We have a motion by Delvo, seconded by Adam, to accept the gifts and thank the donors for their contributions. Any further comments? All those in favor say, or excuse me, it's a resolution, so clerk, please call the roll.
Mr. Adam?
Present.
Ms. Delvo?
Aye.
Ms. Prado?
Aye.
Mr. Riddle?
Aye.
Ms. Stark?
Aye.
Ms. Thornton?
Aye.
And the resolution passes. Next up is a motion for the second reading and adoption of several policies, starting with policy 720 on student surveys. Ms. McLemore.
Board Chair Riddle, school board members, and Superintendent Dr. Kim Hile. Policy 520 for student surveys sets guidelines and procedures as to how the school districts conduct surveys for its students. The guidelines also include, in the event that an individual school wants to survey students, or the district wants to do that, and procedures that school districts must follow if they are going to implement any survey from the U.S. Department of Education. This is the second reading of this survey. There were no additional changes from the first reading. It is presented to you tonight for approval.
Thank you. Next, with a number of policies, will be Ms. Klassman.
Good evening, Board Chair Riddle, board members, and Dr. Hile. I am here presenting Policy 515, Protection and Privacy of Pupil Records. Policy 522, Student Sex Nondiscrimination. Policy 525, Violence Prevention. Policy 525, Notification to Staff Regarding Placement of Students with Violent Behavior. And Form 529 corresponds to that policy. There has been no changes from the first reading, and so therefore I'm asking that the board approve all of these policies this evening.
Thank you. Do I have a motion to accept the second reading and adoption of policies 520, 515, 522, 525, 529, and 529F?
Second.
We have a motion by Stark, seconded by Thornton, to accept the second reading and adoptions. Any further comment? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And motion passes. Thank you. Next item on the agenda would be the annual school board organization and authorizations for 2019. There are a number of organizations that we belong to, as well as the offices, officers that we have chosen for this year. This year, I will be the chair. Ms. Delvo will be the vice chair. Ms. Stark is the clerk, and Ms. Prueeta is the treasurer, while Ms. Thornton and Mr. Adam are directors. We have a number of school board representatives. I won't go through the various groups that we're part of, additional outside committees, folks like AMSD, MSBAC. We also have negotiating committees, several other committees that meet regularly during the year that we have representation on those boards also. So with that, I entertain a motion to approve the school board officers, representatives, and school board salaries for 2019.
I move to approve.
Second.
A motion by Delvo, seconded by Prueeta, to approve the school board officers, representatives, and the school board salaries for 2019. Any further discussion? Not hearing any. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And the motion passes. Next up, we move to our consent agenda. This is the minutes of the regular school board business meeting and work session that were held on December 18th. The monthly financial reports, new contracts, amendments, leaves of absence, termination, resignations, and retirements. The 2019-20, 2021, 2122 school calendars, the pay equity report to the state of Minnesota, as well as a request for the Fridley High School choir trip to the University of Minnesota-Duluth taking place March 28th, 29th of 2019. Do I motion to approve the consent agenda items?
Motion to approve.
Second.
I have a motion by Prueeta, seconded by Thornton, to approve the consent agenda of those items that I mentioned. One item I will like to bring up as part of the consent agenda, Sue Culbertson, longtime administrative assistant at the high school, assisting the principals, been with the district since 1991. She has announced her retirement coming February 15th. So we certainly thank her for all of her many years of service and wish her good luck in her retirement. With that, any other further discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And the consent agenda passes. Next up, written information, beginning with student enrollments. Dr. Hile.
Thank you, Chair Riddle. I just want to give you a brief update on student enrollment since January 1st. There was a slight decrease in enrollment, but with our grades 4 through 6, ALC and voluntary pre-K staying relatively stable. So that's our report for the month since January 1st.
Thank you. Now we have first readings of several policies. Ms. Octedahl.
Thank you. Board Chair Riddle, board members, and Superintendent Hile, I come this evening for the first reading of the following policies. The first policy is Policy 509, Enrollment of Non-Resident Students. The content of this policy has not necessarily been updated, but we have separated the policy from the procedures and created a separate procedural document which will be published with the policy, so I present that for its first reading. The second policy is Policy 511 on student fundraising. We have, again, separated the procedural information from the policy information, and that procedural document and the updated form will be published with the policy as well, and so I present that for its first reading. The third policy is Policy 527, Student Use and Parking of Motor Vehicles on School Property. This policy has been updated to be more aligned with legal requirements, and so the language in that has been changed and updated, and I present that with one correction, revision for its first reading. And Policy 531 for the Pledge of Allegiance. The content of this policy has not been changed, but the language has been revised to be clearer and more aligned with Minnesota School Board Association's model policy. I present these policies to you for their first reading. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, we have reports from school board members, beginning with the Association of Metropolitan School Districts, the legislative preview that was held on January 4th.
Thank you, Chair Riddle. So on January 4th, I attended AMSD legislative session preview, and at that session, we had a presentation from our new Commissioner of Education, Catherine Ricker, excuse me, Mary Catherine Ricker spoke, just in regard of showing appreciation for the previous education commissioner, as well as the learning curve that she would need to catch up on the latest items that is what is occurring in education. Also, there were very, several superintendents that presented information to our legislators so that they would become more knowledgeable about concerns that are happening in the state of education in Minnesota. So one of the superintendents was Superintendent David Law. He is the superintendent of Anoka School District, and he updated legislators on the reimagined work that has occurred in the state of Minnesota, as well as the need for state funding, the need to increase state funding to help schools with their budget. So AMSD is requesting, as well as schools are asking for a 3% increase on the general fund. We also had Dr. Carlton Jenkins, who presented, the superintendent of Robinsale Area Schools, and Mr. Hajikin spoke on special education cross-subsidy and the impact that it is having on districts. Connie Hayes, the superintendent of District 916, addressed concerns in the area of the need for more assistance and help with students in the area of mental health, and also a concern with more help from legislators to have a safe and secure school systems. Terry Solak, who's the superintendent of Parlay Savage School District, spoke to the legislation about the need for equalization, and in regard to ensuring the taxpayers leveling out what taxpayers have to pay according to what businesses they have in their district. School districts that have more businesses, taxpayers have to pay less. So we're working on that equalization formula with the legislators. We also had a legislative panel at that meeting, and it was Representative Jim Davney was there, Representative Sandra Erickson, Senator Carla Nelson, and Senator Chuck Wigger, and they all addressed what issues they'll be working on during their time at the legislative session this year.
Thank you. Next up, we have a report for the Northeast Metro 916 Board Meeting from January 9th. Ms. Delvo.
Yes. District 916 is, Fridley is a member of that district, and this, the 916 district provides special education and career technical education. provides special education and career technical education services to students who need advanced support in those areas. And the 916 district is going to be providing educational services at the Cambia Hills facility, which is a new psychiatric facility which is being built in East Beaufort, and they broke ground on that in December and expect that facility to be open in January of 2020. As a member of the 916 district, one of the benefits to the Fridley School District is to purchase certain things through their joint purchasing contract that 916, so it's basically a group purchasing contract, so it allows us to get things at lower prices because of the group, the large size of people, that, large size of the purchases. A number of districts throughout the state are a member of this, and Fridley spent about $40,000 on, through that contract, which saves us additional funds. It would have been a higher amount had we went out on our own. Another benefit of being a member of the 916 district is they provide specialized training for teachers around students in, not only in special education classrooms, but also in our regular ed. classrooms, and they have a series this summer that they will be offering around literacy, as well as positive behavior interventions, and there's four or five different trainings that our teachers will have access to as a result of our membership. Two final things. One, they created a number of brochures to inform legislators about what an intermediate school district is and the types of students and services they provide. The brochure is very informative, trying to help legislators understand the difference between an intermediate district versus an independent school district, and there are some significant differences. So, they're doing some education around that for our legislators. And finally, the 916 Education Foundation hosts a gala each year to raise money to support students in special education, as well as scholarships and materials for their programming, and they are holding a gala on February 22nd at the North Metro Event Center in Shoreview, and tickets are available for that for anyone who's interested in supporting the 916 Education Foundation, and that's all I have for this month.
Thank you. Our final group would be the Schools for Equity in Education Meeting, held January 11th. Ms. Thornton.
Thanks, Chris. Um, Mr. Riddle. Tended that meeting. We had our first speaker was Kristi Kaput, who's the Policy and Research Manager in Education Evolving, which is, it focuses on education equity issues. It's a Minnesota-based nonprofit organization, and its mission is to advance student-centered learning for all students, supporting teachers, and advocating for policy for change. It focuses on seven principles of student-centered learning, and I'll run through those briefly, but the first one is building positive relationships, of course. Looking at two is looking at the whole child needs. Three, positive identity. Four, student ownership. Five is real-world relevant. It has to have meaning for to them. Six, competency-based education, and seven, learning can take place anytime and anywhere. The first priority of student-centered learning is, it means students advance upon their mastery, based upon demonstrated mastery, which is similar to an old outcome-based education system. Panel discussed a lot, it was similar to that, but it wouldn't be mandatory. The second priority was Teacher Preparation Unit and Program, which is the PLSB, which is the Professional Educational License and Standards Board, which those hasn't been changed in like 15 years, she said. So, discussing some possible changes with that. And the third priority was Standards of Effective Practice, or SEP, and this will be the first time that it's been edited in seven years. And we also had Chairs of the House and Senate Finance Committee, Senator Carla Nelson, discuss priorities for this session. Some she mentioned was working closely with CE to talk about levy and referendum bills, partnership between schools, early childhood education, and mentoring and internships, and also, secure schools and mental health concerns. Jim Daphne also had student-centered bills, mental health support, dual enrollment courses, and engaging students at an early age were some of the top priorities that will be moving forward in this legislation. So, yeah.
Thank you. Now, important future school board dates. The next Northwest Suburban Integration School District Joint Powers Board Meeting will be held tomorrow night at the Northwest Integration District offices in Brooklyn Park. The next AMSD Board Meeting will be held February 1st at 7:00 a.m. at the Cora Education Center. The next Northeast Metro 916 Board Meeting will be February 6th at 6:00 p.m. at the Bel Air School. Schools for Equity in Education's next meeting will be February 8th, 9:00 a.m. at the Radisson Hotel in Roseville. And our next Fridley Public School Board Meeting will be February 19th here at the Fridley Community Center, the work session beginning at 5:30, the open forum starting 7:00 p.m., and the business meeting here at 7:30 p.m. With that, is there anything else for this evening? If not, I would recommend a motion for adjournment.
Second.
I have a motion by Adam, seconded by Thornton, to adjourn the meeting. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And we adjourned at 8:06.